Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Roseville Area School Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 9th. Clerk will please call the roll.
Good evening. Director Bogusiewski?
Here.
Chair Shurcluck?
Here.
Chair Anderson?
Here.
Director Goggins?
Here.
Director Shaw?
Here.
And Clerk Chu is here.
Thank you. Agenda adjustments for this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Under announcements, comments, and recognitions, this evening's land acknowledgement will be read by Director Frank Shaw.
Thank you. Roseville Area Schools acknowledges that we reside on traditional, ancestral, contemporary, and unceded territory of the Dakota people. From Bedote, a confluence of the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers, a place the Dakota people poetically claim as the center of earth directly beneath the center of heaven, to Indian Mounds Park, a sacred place of burial built by ancestors of living people, and home to the only known remaining burial mounds within Minneapolis-St. Paul Urban Core. Indigenous people have cared for this land. Through warfare, genocide, relocation, and removal perpetrated by colonizers, the state of Minnesota, and the federal government, injustices that reduced over 150 million indigenous people to around 300,000, indigenous people have given their blood, tears, heart, resilience, and love to this land. Enduring boarding schools that were in operation from 1879 through the 1930s, where assimilation through humiliation was the curriculum, and unspeakable atrocities occurred daily, to the foster care system where more kids were removed from indigenous homes than any other group in Minnesota, indigenous people have not lost their culture or identity and still reside on this land. Roseville Area Schools is committed to ensuring the culture of our indigenous relatives, the original and rightful caretakers of this land that is studied, preserved, and celebrated. We are committed to understanding and honoring the sovereignty that has been denied to nearly 600 indigenous nations, including 11 federally recognized tribes in Minnesota, through the breaking of over 400 treaties, and we are committed to the truth of the history of our indigenous relatives, the success of our indigenous students, and to the healing we hope to create through this commitment.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Shaw. Right, moving on to recognition of school supply donations. Superintendent Jenny Lake?
Yes, I'd like to share. As we begin the new school year, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to our community for their ongoing and ever-present generosity. From individuals to faith-based groups to local businesses, our community has once again stepped up to show incredible love and support for our students through school supply donations. We were literally overwhelmed by the donations, from papers and pencils to glue, scissors, backpacks, and so much more. Thanks to this generosity, every student is starting this school year equipped with the supplies they need to learn. Thank you to our community.
Thank you. Moving on to this evening's agenda. Summary of community input received for action items. I have not received anything this evening's action items. I don't believe the clerk has received anything. All right. Moving on to this evening's consent agenda. We do have retirement. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the retirement.
It's all moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, minus retirement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Clerk Chu.
Yes, I'm presenting to you one retirement, Belinda Jones from the Empeto-Techa Education Center, our English language teacher. She has been with the district for 19 years. We really thank her for her service and wish her the best. So I move for her retirement.
Thank you. Been moved. Is there a second?
I second with great appreciation the service that she has provided for us.
It's a moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And reading gifts this evening will be Director Kitty Goggins.
We are incredibly fortunate, as Dr. Lake mentioned, on the amount of support we get from the community. So I beg your patience as I read this extensive list this evening. Abetu Techa Center received from Como Park Lutheran Church funds for Meals on Wheels. Falcon Heights Elementary Schools received from Terry Kirasek School Supplies for Students in Need, and also from Como Park Lutheran Church School Supplies for Student in Need. Roseville Area High School received from the Roseville Swim and Dive Booster Clubs funds for additional coaching staff for the girls' swimming and diving program. Roseville High School received from Margot and Robert Olson funds for the girls' soccer program, and from Tony Rabillard funds for the volleyball program, from the Roseville Anderson Nielsen VFW Auxiliary Number 7555 funds for the trap team, from the Wilson Foundation funds for the trap team, from the North Suburban Evening Lions Club funds for the food shelf, from the U.S. Bank Foundation funds for school needs, from Tina Biegenek funds for school needs, and then Roseville Area Schools generally received from Rosepoint Senior Living funds on school supplies for students in need, from Sonia Baker School Supplies for Student in Need, from Little Canada Candidate Days funds and school supplies for students in need, from Midwest Radiology School Supplies for Students in Need, Ramsey County Library also, school supplies for student needs, as well as St. Rose of Lima Catholic Church, and from Corpus Christi Catholic Church, and from St. Christopher's Episcopal Church, and from Maguire Agency, and from the FedEx Express, and from Omir Choice Roseville. All those groups and individuals provided school supplies for students in need. And we also received from Karen Doherty some funds for district needs, and from Erin Mastrian. Obviously, we have a lot of generous individuals in our community, and our students greatly benefit from the donations that are being received.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Goggins. Right, we are now moving on to reports and non-action items. First day of school report. Come on up, our associate superintendents.
A very fun and exciting report, it is.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, distinguished board members. My name's Maura Wyon. I'm one of the associate superintendents, and...
Dion Smith, the other associate superintendent.
And we are so excited to be here this evening to share with you about these first few days of school.
Absolutely. So, as you know, because we've all, well, I would say most of us have experienced the first day of school, it's always an exciting time, filled with hope and the promise for the year to come. The first day of school is important because it sets the tone for the entire academic year.
You're an expert.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit more to that, would you like to add?
You go.
A successful first day of school can build confidence and excitement for learning, making it a critical opportunity for students, families, teachers, and the staff to build a strong foundation for the year. Both Maura and I have had the privilege of visiting schools and programs for their first day of school. There's like eight first days of school right now in the district, but all of them have been a joy to experience. So, this presentation will touch on these areas of the strategic plan. As you know, Goal Area 1, our graduates are prepared to achieve their goals and aspirations. Goal Area 2, our learners contribute to equitable care in society. Number 3, we are a culturally responsive, inclusive, anti-racist district. And 4, the community is united behind meeting students' needs. So, part of this presentation, just to kind of lay it out for you, will show how the first day of school supports the strategic plan, and how the strategic plan impacts the first day of school. So, we wanted to start, capture a quote that could sum up the essence of the first day of school or new school year, and it just reads, "A new school year means new beginnings, new adventures, new friendships, and new challenges. The slate is clean and anything can happen," which is just a great thought, and I think a feeling that everyone has on that first day of school. So, we know this is like true for every student who walked through our doors this past week. Everything is possible on the first day of school, right? And we get a chance to write the next chapter of the story every single school year. So, now Maura's going to give us some highlights and give us some stories for how, you know, in our travels, we saw our strategic plan in action on the first day of school.
Thank you. I also love that quote, and we saw that sense of adventure, the new friendships, new challenges being taken on these first few days. And another way to say all of that is that we saw innovation, excellence, and equity. One quick story I want to highlight is how our students are being prepared to achieve their goals through a story corps, the Press Story Corps at Harambe. These students, on day one, were exhibiting student leadership, already out interviewing their younger classmates and peers, and talking about, like, what do you look forward to this year? So, day one, they are ready to go. And then, when we look at Goal Area 2, we had multiple sites that were truly rolling out that red carpet with intentionality and a radical welcome for the first day of school, and this is joy in learning. We witnessed student leadership. It was many students last day of summer, and they showed up for someone else's first day. We had Ross upperclassmen outside greeting our freshmen, the ninth graders, to bring them in, give some guidance, show them around. We had football players at every elementary site welcoming students off the bus. And I just think that's so important to point out because this is community, and it was done so well. All right, for Goal Area 3, we see lots of smiling kids. And when you see a smiling kid, you smile, or adults too. And I just want to say that walking alongside every smiling child is a smiling educator. Our staff have also been seen in this joy and challenge and new beginnings of a school year. So, for example, at Rams, they are really leveling up this year. Their theme last year was, "What's Your Ripple Effect?" And they're building on that this year to make it, they're making waves. And they are demonstrating from day one their commitment to anti-racist practices. And now, the first day of school, it, like I said, it's not just about our children, it's about our educators, and it truly is also about the whole family. The first day of school is a tradition that is often a family affair. We see this on social media through the joyful pictures and people listing their hopes and dreams. We see, you know, the tears as parents leave the first day of pre-K yesterday. It's just a really, it's a big deal for the whole family. And partnering with families and building that culture of belonging takes work from all of us. And I want to say that family can be defined in so many ways. And family is about honoring those that came before us. The start of the year really symbolizes the hopes and dreams of that child, their family, and their ancestors. I did not get a picture of this, but my favorite first day of school outfit was a second-grade child at Central Park with the t-shirt that says, "I am my ancestors' wildest dreams." And, next slide there. And that is like, as we head into this, every child that walked through one of our school's doors, someone in their family believes that. And we believe that too, as we've seen that.
Absolutely. Yeah, so let's take a look at some more special moments from the first day of school. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, we're going to close with this quote, "Wake up and own your greatness." That's what we hope each student feels on that first day of school and every day that they step into our buildings. And here at Roseville Schools, we want them to remember this and remember this feeling. And, you know, that's up to us and how we love on our students and how we live into our strategic plan. So, students, wake up, own your greatness.
Yeah.
All right, that's our presentation.
It was really well done. I feel as though I'm exercising my smile muscle again all of last week. I think I had sore smile muscle, and I'm feeling it right now. Really, really proud. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all of our staff for providing this welcoming environment.
Any questions, board members?
Any comment on numbers of students? Was there sort of a typical school year where those we expected showed up?
That's a good question.
From the elementary level, more than, I could check the numbers, but more came on the first day than a year ago. We also had a higher amount of kindergarten students enrolled, and, but K-6, more students came the first day than last year.
Yeah. And, yeah, I would say secondary from, just from recollection, I think we're...
Strong enrollment, yeah.
Good.
At the Falcon Heights PTA meeting last night, there were comments, approving comments of the new bus system. What, can you give an overall impression of how that went?
That's my overall impression. I continue to hear so many great things about how committed the drivers have been, how clean the buses are, how on time they've been. We have a few little pocket areas, and people have, I had two conversations today. People are aware of those and have plans to make improvements. This is a vast improvement from last year's, the routes in the beginning of the year. They've been on time in the morning.
On-site staff from Schminion Sons helping with the routing and the safety plans and the greeting.
Yes.
Sharon, if you want to provide any comments?
I think for the most part, you've all covered it. We are very happy with them, and we have daily conversations with them and looking at how the few bumps we have, how we can iron out those wrinkles, and they're working on that. Overall, we're very happy. They retained a lot of the centerline staff, which is great. And the centerline staff seem very happy.
Great. Yeah, thank you for asking.
All right. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. All right, moving on to this evening's action items. Dion, you'll be staying right there.
Yes.
Policy 510, the second reading in the student dress, second reading.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Anderson. As part of our ongoing policy review, I'm bringing forth Policy 510P, Student Dress, for a second reading of the policy revisions. The first reading of this policy took place on Tuesday, August 19, 2025. We're conducting a second reading of this policy because there was a suggested addition to the current policy that we have. It was advised that the district adopt the following addition to the policy to clarify our stance on headwear and to align our policy with MSBA Model Policy 504. And just to refresh memories, that suggested addition reads 4.0, "Headwear, including hats or head coverings, are allowed provided that it does not cover the student's face to the extent that the student is not identifiable." So, at that last school board meeting on the 19th, the school board did not have any additional suggestions. And so, it's recommended that the board approve Policy 510, Student Dress, as presented. And I'm open for any questions.
I have all question.
Just to say, I appreciate the explicit layout of that, since I think that's the policy we've been following for quite a while, but having it clear so that it's all understood by everyone, I think, really appreciate that clarity.
Absolutely.
And then, I move approval.
I was just going to ask. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Policy 510. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us to Policy 722, Public Data and Data Subject Request, second reading. We welcome Director Kenny McCarty.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. This evening, I'm bringing forth a second reading of Policy 722, which is Public Data and Data Subjects Request. The revisions are based on feedback from the first reading that we had on August 19 school board meeting, and they include the following. So, in Section 1.0 of the policy, there was a request and recommendation to include the types of data and data requests referenced in this policy, and so we outlined those there to be clear in that, in that portion of the policy. On Section 3.1, for confidential data on individuals, definitions, it was requested that we added the word "that" for readability. And so, in that section now it reads, "Data may not be public by statute or federal law applicable to the data, and that are inaccessible to the individual subject of those data." Section 3.3, we reference responsible authority, and there was a recommendation to identify where it is also stated further in the policy, and so we did provide that clarity as well. And so, it's referenced that it's in Section 3.14. On Section 4.2.4, under Request for Data, Public Data, there was a request and recommendation to remove the word "responsive" in reference to data, just to be clear about what that looks like. And I think there were some questions around that, so we eliminated that word. And there was also a recommendation under Section 6 and 7 to perhaps look at those to combine them. While we heard those responses and heard those recommendations, we are recommending that we keep those sections as they are provided in the MSBA Model Policy because there are some nuances and differences between the two types of data and the process for that. So, we have left those as is, and those are the recommendations that you provided on the 19th and the second reading of the policy. Open up for any questions.
All right, Director Goggins.
On Section 4.2.4, I know you told us last week what MGDPA is, but what I would ask is that the acronym be spelled out. Yeah, that was sent here. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Goggins. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Policy 722, second reading.
I move to approve Policy 722 as is with the addition of writing out what MGDPA stands for.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any further discussion on Policy 722? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to Item 7C. This will be a resolution stating the intention of the board to issue general obligation facilities maintenance bonds. We welcome Director Sherri Thompson.
Thank you. So, this is a follow-up to the action that you took last month, the annual action on our long-term facility maintenance projects. Every other year, we issue bonds. So, we funded the deferred maintenance, the LTFM, in a combination of pay-as-you-go levy, and then also bonds. So, what this resolution will do is authorize the issuance of bonds next spring. And this, the cap on this, the maximum, is $30,745,000. The amount may actually be less, as we're working through our LTFM right now with the Department of Education. But we're going with the maximum amount so we can work with the Department of Education and also Ramsey County to get the preliminary levy data in.
Director Goggins.
Is part of the reason for authorizing this now is to offer some flexibility and timing for when the market is at a good point for issuing these bonds?
Well, typically, we just, we typically do it in the spring, just before we're starting our projects, when we do it every other year. So, we do it now so that it can, they can put that into our preliminary levy.
I see.
And that needs to be in by September 30.
Is there any benefit to thinking about whether it would be financially attractive to do earlier, or does it make the most sense financially to do it in spring?
Typically, traditionally, it has been the spring. But I will say, you know, we work closely with Ellers on this, and, and they, they know. So, they will start watching. We have very close contact from like December on, depending on what the market's doing. So, that's a real, that's a very good question.
Thank you.
All right, any questions before we read the resolution? All right, Clerk Chu.
I move for the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, Series 2026A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $30,745,000.
Okay. Been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the resolution? This will be a roll call vote. Okay, no further motions. We'll start the roll call. Thank you.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Goggins?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Shurcluck?
Aye.
Director Bogusiewski?
Aye.
And Clerk Chu, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Thompson.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us to our study session report. Director Kitty Goggins, thank you.
Okay, at our study session last month, we had two topics. We talked about kind of our board policy revision process. It is outlined in policy that we can either approve a policy with one reading or we, or with two readings, and we've traditionally only done two. So, it's a discussion around when would it be appropriate to just use the one. And the conversation was really around if, if the revision, if there's no changes, or if it's not substantial changes in terms of how we operate, that just doing it in one policy reading made a lot of sense and would be very efficient. However, if it's a new policy, or if there are substantial changes, we want to continue using the first and second reading because that allows the community to have input between the first and second reading before we take our vote on approval of the policy. The second topic we had was reviewing the draft of School Board Handbook. Last winter, there was a task force created by the board to draft a manual for the board, kind of processes and procedures, using the Minnesota School Board Association's template that they issued last fall. This manual is really, it, I mean, references, you know, govern, our governance policies and also applicable laws in the state. But it, it is more to just get the kind of the norms of how we operate, what are our processes, our practices, to get those down so that we kind of have a mutual understanding of the processes. We are concerned that this was particularly important as we're going to have two new, two new members on the school board starting in January. The key areas that are covered in this document are district information, kind of an overview around the board post-election procedures, the board's organization, how, tools and resources for learning the job, individual board membership, the roles, responsibilities, and how it operates, working as a board team, and the role of the superintendent... superintendent, um, board meetings and governance, and then board communication guide um are the major categories and sections currently in there. Although at that meeting, there was some discussion, while we are comfortable that we have the content correct, um, there's still some conversation around, we may be changing some of the organization to make it flow easier for new members to access. It is certainly a resource to new members as well as to existing members, but we wanted to make it as accessible as possible. Another area that came up was that uh, this is a good time to be reviewing board policies since we had to all refresh our memory of those board policies because they're all referenced in this manual. So that will be a task that the board is taking on and has identified a task force to do that we'll be getting back to the board later this fall with potential areas of change or, or the, where it's not necessary, to kind of review them.
Thank you. Thanks Kitty. All right, this brings us to board reports for the evening. Um, why don't we start with Clerk Chu, please?
You might do that. I think in the spirit of uh kind of the beginning of the school, school year, I had the honor to visit the open houses for Parkview Center School and also Little Canada Elementary School. I have to say, it just made my day. It was just the energy, um, just people were excited to come and I really wanted to thank the school, I mean, the staff and uh everyone who really welcomed our students and family back, especially given what was happening that week, uh, to just see families, hey, we are here, our students are excited, it was just really wonderful. And at Parkview, the one thing I would call out is that, that inclusive um, inclusive playground. I was very impressed and really thanked the parents for like raising the money and making this a reality. So really thankful for the community support to make that happen. So can't wait to see it when it, when it's gonna, now I can't remember when it's gonna start. Is it up?
Well, there's some, this should happen this fall.
Yeah.
There's some work, it's kind of uh, can't think of the word, but spaced out over the year. Uh, so we'll see, we'll see some things happening, yeah.
It's, it's great, yeah. And then the, the third thing that I did was um went with um, to Falcon Heights. Yeah, it was great on the first day, maintenance was there, uh, just the buses were all working, trying to get, make sure people go to the right place, just wonderful, wonderful to know that our district really are welcoming all our students and family back.
Wonderful. All right, Director Bogusiewski.
I don't, I don't really have anything, actually. Did was the, I think, I'm not even remembering, was the, the welcome back thing? That was since the last meeting, right?
It was.
So assuming someone, I'll defer to someone because I don't want to pile on, but it was great. But I was very proud, again, to be part of this district, just seeing the event that you guys put on and the great job that you two did, the associate superintendents, it was just your, your M S C-ing the event. And with the guest speaker we had, it was just fantastic and the, the music and everything. So I'll, I'll let other people get into some details.
Thank you for every board member being there, it was very impressive to have full participation from our school board.
Can I add real quick?
Please.
That there's, you know, the team behind me here, um, you know, there, there's, there's so much work they put into that day. There's so much playing that happens, collaboration that happens. And so, you know, whereas Maureen and I get the privilege of being able to be up there and speak, um, there's so many people that deserve credit for that, for how that day went and, and how smoothly, how much fun we had. So thank you to this team and there's plenty others that aren't here tonight as well.
Well, I, and you know, maybe the, the only other thing I'll add about it is um, it's a celebratory, fun day, but at the same time, it is a learning day.
Yeah.
And even the guest speaker was like, you know, laying down the law about, you know, do your job, right?
Your job is to do your job.
Job is to do your job. And so there's, there's a serious piece to it also, and I think it sets a, uh, just the right tone, you know, for the staff to understand that, yeah, we were all happy to be here, the same way we've worked to do, you know, we're, we're taking care of our future with the kids. So uh, it's just a really, really great morning.
It's the year for us to level up, Delon?
It's the year to level up.
Wonderful. Treasurer Clark?
Um, a couple of things from nine sixteen, one of the highlights of our meeting this time, they said that the waitlist is less than it's been in the past. We still have a waitlist, but it's better than it has in the past. And I also toured the nine sixteen student-built house that they do every year, it's the thirty-first year they've done the student-built house um there. There'll be a little change next year, I think they're taking a break because there's some thing with the city of North St. Paul that they've been utilizing and how that goes, but um, the students there are always excited about that. I did do the Zoom of um AMSD, I see Peter Leatherman's presentation about, is it Purpich?
And Art Center?
Art Center, that was also very good. That was very good as well. Um, and yeah, the first day, Rose mentioned, got to go to Falcon Heights as well as um Roz with Todd as well, it was always a good time, got a little rain, but the students were excited about the rain coming there. And the buses, I can report that my junior, bus is good, he said, he likes the new bus and everything is good, so. Oh, and that's a lot from him, so.
That's big.
Wonderful, thank you, Director Goggins.
Um, regarding the welcome back, um, our speaker was Gloria Ladsen Billings, who is kind of a um, one of the key authors of a lot of the work around making sure every student is welcome in school. And I have to say, I was so impressed because it was, it was at a high level in terms of, you know, big ideas, but then it got down to what does that mean when you go to your classroom? And, and covering that whole distance, that's really um impressive for a speaker. So I just think that was really uh an amazing back to school and very inspiring from everybody I had a chance to talk to and of course myself as well. Um, the Harambe Steering Committee met and also I met with a group of, of individuals um predominantly from Harambe around discussing, how do we describe the environmental learning that will occur? And I just wanted to share, uh, this came from a, the Harambe staff meeting, which is some original, uh, initial concepts of, around what is, makes Harambe unique. Harambe is defined by community and belonging, equity and justice, a deep connection to nature and a commitment to student-centered culturally responsive learning. And it was just uh really powerful to hear about how the environmental learning is incorporated in, and, and it's not just about the environment, how the cultural pieces incorporated when learning, for example, about monarchs and their migration, how the, um, so many different geography and all these different components are integrated. And it was just lovely to get more experienced about that. Um, then I had an opportunity to attend the Roseville Area Senior Programs Meeting. They are very much in need of volunteers for Meals on Wheels and that program is not just about providing meals, but it's a check for people. It's a, it's a very powerful um way to stay connected with the community and it, you can do it once a week or once a month, um, but they're very much um looking for opportunities. They are offering forty-four different um, uh, programs for, or events for seniors this fall, so very engaged with lots of work going on. And um, they will be again having their senior housing program later this fall. So lots of exciting work there. And then I did get to go to one of the schools the first week, um, which was Harambe and got to s, get some of the experiences that others have shared. That's it.
Thank you, Director Shaw.
Yeah, I mentioned earlier that I had, I was at the PTA meeting last night for Falcon Heights, always an exciting event. And um, it was mentioned there, there were a couple of things. It was mentioned there that this new cohort of students coming in are the students who were born into COVID in twenty twenty. So this is the, I have a, I have a granddaughter who, who experienced this too. And you know, it's, it's not a scientific observation, but it's an observation that these children play very well with themselves and are a little bit less comfortable than what we've seen in the past in collaborative learning. And so it's something that they've, that the teachers immediately noticed um and have started to, to, to look at solutions for that. The other thing is that um, out in front of the cafeteria there at Falcon Heights, uh, there was a bed of thistles. The thistles are a weed, we think of them as a weed and they're, you know, they, you can look at them in various different ways, but anyway, the grounds crews come in and scraped them all off and covered it with wood chips and the thistles are coming back. They're all coming back. So they need, and, and this comes to what you have to do in education as well. You have to get down on your hands and knees and you have to deal with each one of those thistles by itself. And I get the sense that that's what's being done in our schools and in Falcon Heights in particular. There was one parent there who is also a member for the next couple of years of MathCor. And I was delighted to hear that MathCor continues to be funded. I know that there are some AmeriCor programs, I thought all of them had been cut off. But, but apparently MathCor goes on and ReadingCor, so that, those interventions will be in our schools at least for another year. That's good. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thanks Frank.
Yeah, just a couple of things kind of to reiterate last week, um, first day of schools, welcome week, it's always um, it was wonderful to, you know, visit Roz in the morning with Superintendent Lake and Treasurer Clark, you know, greeting the ninth grade students, seeing these brand-new buses come up, running very smoothly, running on time, and a lot of the smiles, you know, faces of the students, staff. Uh, it's just, it's just, you know, it just gets you going, you know, gets you going uh in the morning, in the day. And Superintendent Lake and I had an opportunity to go to Parkview um and see the playground, visit more with staff and students, and then we proceeded to go to Edgerton, met more students and staff. And we also, I should say, we met with both principals of both schools. Yeah, new principals. And we met some of the, I think there was a new staff member at the CID program at Edgerton that we were introduced to, so just kind of the same story. It's just, you know, fresh, clean buildings, hallways, smiles, just the energy, positivity is just fantastic. And, and I know we had Edgerton at the right time, students were just arriving, so it was wonderful. Then this past Friday, we had an opportunity to go to Falcon Heights. And um, again, visit with staff and students and Principal Beth Benke. And I think you and I even, we kind of lucked out, we were able to join a kindergarten class in one of their welcoming, round robin, kind of.
Participate.
Participate in it, and so that um, that was, that was fantastic too. Um, but just, it was wonderful to, I know we all had opportunities to visit schools and welcome week, it was just wonderful to be back and, you know, see everybody, we're all ready to go. And then just one last little reminder that due to Rosh Hashanah, our next meeting is Thursday. Remember, that's also for the community to know as well, Thursday, September twenty-fifth, uh, same bat time, same bat channel, same bat location, okay? So same location and time, Thursday, September twenty-fifth.
All right. That's all I have, Superintendent Lake.
Thank you. Positive report from me as well. What a wonderful first week of school it was. It was a joy to see our students return, ready to learn, connect and make new memories. As we step into this school year together, I hope it is filled with new friends, exciting experiences and moments of pure joy for our students. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to our incredible staff, from our teachers and support staff to our buildings and grounds crew, our nutrition services team, our tech team and so many more. Uh, all of our staff ensure our students are thriving in clean, welcoming spaces, enjoying healthy meals and surrounded by caring adults who know them, love them and want them to succeed. And we are going to have an amazing year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lake. All right, board members, we're not going anywhere. We now enter our, there is no study session this evening, but we do have a closed session. So I will kick things off by making the initial motion. Uh, motion to close the meeting for the purpose of considering strategy for labor negotiations with Education Minnesota Roseville per Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D point zero three. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we will now enter into our closed session. All right. All right, I'd like to call the regular business or regular school board meeting of September ninth back to order. Uh, thank you everybody for your patience and for your contributions this evening. Uh, if there's no further business for the board, uh, the regular meeting stands adjourned for the evening.